Twenty twenty-five. Get a motion to approve the bills, please.
So motion to. Second, whatever you need, second.
Any questions? Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No, Stan, I wasn't here. Uh, review of the minutes, if we can get approval on the minutes for April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, please.
So moved. A second.
Any questions, concerns, thoughts? All in favor?
Stand.
Stand over all, thank you. Is there any public comment for the meeting today? Being none, we will close public comment. Do we have a student rep today? Thank you, Mr. Sirmak. CTA. How you doing, Brenda? I'm doing well, thank you.
Okay, so CTA met with Representative Meg Kilcoyne, and I just wanted to share out a couple of things. It was, went really, really well. So Meg asked our opinion on a proposed statewide ban on cell phones in schools. All are in agreement that they're a distraction during the day, but she's going to keep us posted on that legislation. That was kind of, that was good. Teachers were concerned with the quality of breakfast, particularly sugar cereals being served at school. And we know that makes the food meets the federal guidelines. But we talked about the state's commitment to universal free breakfast and lunch, and she's looking into farm-to-school provisions, since we're lucky enough to live in central Mavs and lots of farms around here, so I'll keep you posted on that. We discussed the budget process, and she was really more concerned about next year's budget. If we have a recession, then there'd be less revenue, so I hope we don't have a recession. And let's see. Lastly, all right, since we no longer run the DC trip and field trips to Boston are very expensive due to the busing costs, Meg is going to look into bringing the State House to the middle school and some planned events at the middle school. She's looking forward to working with us at school, and she's also looking forward to working with the social studies teachers on the Democratic Knowledge Project. So, all good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think from the PTA. I was gonna say, I noticed your partner in crime's not here.
Yeah, she was running around delivering snacks.
Okay, all right.
She is far and double to me, because I couldn't take the day off to work up there, so.
Good evening. So we are currently sitting at a hundred and sixty members. We are still shy of our goal of two hundred and sixteen, which would meet our goal of doubling from last year. A little ambitious, but we're hopeful. We closed out our PTA scholarship application on the thirtieth with three applicants. All applications have been sent to the Committee for Evaluations. They will have their decisions to us by this Sunday, the eleventh, and from there, we will then award the scholarships by that following week and letting guidance know on their awards. Our next meeting is this Wednesday, the seventh, at six fifteen. There is a change to the Wednesday because we didn't hold it last week because of an event that CES had, so we didn't want to conflict. I mentioned the meeting change because it is important. Attendance for this meeting, we're stressing because we have several funding requests that are going to be brought up, and attendance by members is greatly appreciated because we can't actually vote on anything if we don't have quorum. One of the biggest funding requests that we are looking forward to voting in is a new fundraising event that Ms. Silvio brought to us and proposed, and we are going forward with. And we are going to run a Boostathon Glow Run at the elementary school pending a vote for approval for spending for the services that are offered through Boostathon, and that'll be held in the fall at that elementary school for all grades, pre-K through fourth. Emily and Jess actually went and was able to attend another school's Glow Run, and it is so fun. The kids are going to have a blast. It's done in the gym, so it's rain or shine. They get all pumped up. They provide a bunch of volunteers and the gear and everything. It's inclusive. The teachers get to get involved with the kids. So much fun. So we're thinking that that'll be so much more interactive and more enjoyable than buy stuff out of the catalog. We also have two fund requests from sixth and eighth grade that we need to have voted in so that we can provide help with busing costs. We have two things going on this week. We have Teacher Appreciation Week, and we could not be remiss in letting it go by without spoiling our teachers. So we have our sweet treats scheduled for Wednesday. We have tea and lemonade coming from Raising Canes again this year for all three schools, as well as Nothing Bunt cupcakes, all being donated, as well as for the admin building. So those will be coming Wednesday morning. And then each school and the administration building members who have joined the PTA will be included with the high school in the raffle. We have three raffles that will be running for PTA members, for the faculty. That will include, there's probably, I think, at least a hundred and fifty dollars in value worth of items and gift cards in each, their carts filled with swag that will be raffled off at the end of the week. And then we are in the gathering stages for our calendar that we'll be doing again for next year. So we'll be gathering all the dates, sponsors, looking for our, you know, big-ticket person who or sponsor to take the headline of the cover. And we have our book fair running at the elementary school this week, so all the things.
Is that all?
That's why Emily is working tonight and went home to sleep.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from CPAC? LPAK. How are you?
Hello.
Hey.
Good evening. Just a brief summary about the multicultural. We have nine countries that represent their culture. Students from the tree building collect information from different countries and create poster. They wish were displayed in the event. Six, six community leaders offer information for family. We received donation from seven businesses in and around Clinton. We have a great turnout. A lot of students and teachers, especially from high school, for me, that is huge, were present in the event. Was a totally success. Families are feeling welcome. On behalf of the LPAK, I want to thank each parent, students, teacher, administration, and school committee for being there with us. Thank you.
Thanks for all the work that you do. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Tried to be good, but you can't go to that and not eat.
You gotta eat in every country, too.
Right.
You can't just choose. Dr. Meyer, over to you, sir.
All right. So for staffing updates, we had a couple. We had Lilian. Tmori was our, basically our subnurse covering for our maternity leave, and she ended up taking a full-time position, so she's leaving. Ash LaCoral, CESIA, has resigned, and Brianna Durkin, our math interventionist at the middle school, has given us her resignation. We knew that was coming, though. That was concluded in the budget cuts, but she's officially given it to us. And Shelley Eckert, who has been off for a little while, but we confirmed it was, she officially has retired. So we wish her well, and she's invited to the retiree celebration next meeting. I do have one other staffing update that we need to address is Andrea Whitman, grade one, special ed co-teacher. She's requesting to miss the entire year next year for a long-term maternity leave. So she's able to take the portion that would be like the FMLA time, but then the rest of that would be unpaid. So she is eligible to do that, but it says it has to go to the school committee for approval. We are recommending that, and that's actually probably one of the ways that we'll be able to take a staff member who might have been without a job and be able to have them at least fill in for her next year. So, so I'm recommending that we approve her, the full year leave for Andrea Whitman.
I'll support that motion. I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? Conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll let her know. All right, so next up is our athletics update, and we have Athletic Director Goldman here to, who's that to us?
Evening, everyone.
Hey, John.
Hello. So good to be here again. It's been a little bit, but I am going to dive into the spring season. Winter season did go out in the newsletter last time. As far as how we did, it was phenomenal, a great season. So again, jumping into the spring, we've seen some chaotic weather, then we saw some great weather, and now we're back to chaotic weather this week. So lucky today, we were able to not only postpone, we were also able to reschedule within like two hours, which is great because that gets us back on. Officials are a hot commodity, and we were able to fill those slots as quickly as possible, which is great. Thank you to D. Bussing and our facility workers for all their help accommodating these kind of chaotic weather days when I'm calling five minutes, twenty minutes before a game, or not usually quite that close, saying, okay, left, left turn, we're doing this now. So it's been great, and I really appreciate all of their help. We look forward to a great run in the tournament season. Teams are doing well, including our lacrosse cooperative teams. Middle school teams are off to a great start, and we look forward to celebrating those student athletes who play on middle school teams on June seventeenth at eight thirty at CMS. So that's something a little bit different and new. We are doing certificates for all of the eighth-grade participants that are on teams. My goal is to get in front of the audience of CMS and promote them to continue participation, increase participation. My other goal is that it's not going to be me speaking to them. It's, I'm looking at my ambassadors do that, as long as they're free that morning, or at least bring student athletes down so that they can do the speaking and congratulate the student athletes, since it's a better vibe than, than myself, for being. So there's that side of it, and then we do have two other celebrations, actually three coming up. On May twenty-eighth is our Senior Athletic Banquet. Before that, we will do our signing ceremony in the auditorium for our seniors that are going on to play post-secondary collegiate athletics. So that'd be a great evening, not only to celebrate them, but then to move over into our Senior Athletic Banquet. Again, that's the twenty-eighth at six PM. On June ninth is our All-Sports Banquet, again, at six PM, holding that in, in the auditorium. So again, great occasions, please, we hope that you can join us on those occasions to celebrate these student athletes that have done so well this year. A couple of different things that we are doing, I've been working with Booster Club on this. We will be celebrating also our JV players with a certificate. In the past, I know they had not received anything, so everyone will get a certificate with the seasons they played, with the level designated for whether it be JV or varsity, and then for varsity, they'll have their pins, letters, and other awards that they have also gotten. So a little bit of streamlining and a, kind of getting everybody recognized, so we're kind of excited about that. Any questions on the banquets?
The yearly, we have the traditional, like, family athletic awards. What night are those presented?
So the, the athletic, the All-Sports Banquet is going to be on June ninth.
And that's when those, the.
That's when those are given out?
That's when those will be given, the, that's when, not for the, just the seniors. Those are for all, all the other student athletes.
Oh, no, this is just, I think these are just for the senior, I think these are only senior awards.
So senior awards are going to be May twenty-eighth.
Okay, so the, the, the family awards, I think.
Okay, I understand.
Oh, you're referring to like the, I was gonna say, the memorandum, honorary awards.
Yes, the honorary awards, yes, yeah.
So that is, I'm sorry, that is May twenty-eighth, at six PM.
Okay.
So we'll do the signing ceremony first for those students and families, and we'll move in, have food, and then move in to giving all the awards afterwards. Our fall signings begin on May twelfth. I did delay that a little bit just because we are still finishing up some interviews and getting ready for our fall seasons. The arbiter is already updated with ninety percent, if not all, of the games for the fall, and we'll be updated with all of the winter athletics within the next week and a half or two weeks.
It's crazy to think you're already into next year. It's like, how fast it goes, how fast it goes.
You and me both. I would think it was this morning, they were like, can we have independent data? I said, I need to get the regular schedule off for, for winter, give me five minutes here. So I'm like, we're moving. A couple of big events that are coming up, Clinton versus Nishoba at Polar Park. Please, there is an update, it's going to be at seven PM. Polar Park requested that. They obviously had to cancel things today, and they were trying to move and go back to back. So that is now a seven PM start. Exciting night for everyone, and we're excited to host there. There's also going to be a Kyle's Care Week where we will have ribbons. They're actually a Kelly Green ribbon for mental health awareness. So that game will have that, they'll have some information about that. And then during the week, I will have all the student athletes make sure that they have a ribbon on to, to commemorate that. We also have during that week, the sixteenth, the Clintons softball team's strikeout cancer game. Four o'clock will be JV, seven o'clock will be varsity, again, another great event to celebrate. We've got some special items happening that day, including, I think it's a raffle going on they're doing as well during, during that game, during those games, so please come out and support that. And a couple little data points. So this is an official data because this year is not over, but I just wanted to run some numbers for everybody, since we're using final forms. The last time I checked, we had a hundred and eighteen twelfth graders enrolled. Thirty-nine of those participate in sports. Five of those are three-sport student athletes, sixteen are two-sport student athletes. The last time I checked at CHS, when I ran this data, five hundred and fifty-six was the total enrollment. Two hundred and eighty-one participate in sports. Two hundred and eighty-one. It's, that is amazing numbers for our school size. I mean, over fifty percent of our student body participates in athletics. I, I'm baffled by it. Forty-five are three-sport athletes, ninety-five are two-sport athletes. Our staff is fifty-two in the athletic department, minus me, that's fifty-three. People that we have for paid or volunteer that need to sign up, be registered, and continue all their PD that they have to do. Twenty-six are paid, twenty-six are volunteer. One coach coaches three sports, eleven coaches coach two sports. At the middle school, we have two hundred and seventy-seven seventh and eighth graders, a hundred and fifteen, I'm sorry, two hundred and seventy-seven, seventh, eighth graders, a hundred and fifteen seventh and eighth graders participate in sports. Thirty-one of them play two sports, seven play three sports, and we have twenty-one sixth graders that participate as well. So the reason why I find it, and again, I'm a data person as well, I'd like to see how that looks, is it is truly amazing. I have not worked at a school that has this much participation. It is excellent. It's a, it's a lot of work, because there's a lot of people to certify for such a small district, and even the staff on is, is great. The amount of people that coach and then coach multiple sports is, is wonderful. So again, a big congratulations to this community for all the support that they give, and I appreciate everything. Any questions for me?
Yeah. You might have more energy than I do, yeah. You talk faster than I do.
Sorry.
No, no. So I had brought this up before, but I was talking to Bry Farag, the facilities guy today, about having the Thanksgiving game down at Fuller. Now, it wouldn't be, our, our home is next year, twenty-six. I mean, great if the show would do it, I mean, it's halfway between both schools. I mean, great if they do it, I mean, I know they probably wouldn't, but when I was talking to Bry, if it's something that he wanted to do, there's, there's things that have to happen between now and then with, with the grounds. So, you know, when I was talking to him today, because I, we just talked nonsense for a little bit, and that just came up. So if it is something that, you know, you want to entertain, we'd have to make that decision, let him know so that they can, like, the scoreboard stuff has to be, has to be repaired. So we, I just don't, I want to do it, but I'm not saying you have to, just my idea. But if they do, I'd want to wait till next June and say, hey, we, we'd love to do it, but we didn't have enough time to, to get stuff ready.
So something you would like me to look into is maybe doing at Fuller Field.
Please.
I will, I can do that. I could, you know.
You're a lot easier to get along with than other people like.
Winters back?
Okay, that was another side.
I have to go down here. So I think, you know, I mean, that would be something on, on both sides. I'm not even, I mean, I know it's at Nishoba next year, but it's more of a split cost, and it's not like Tanya works it or I work it, we're all there. So I will, I will discuss that with Tanya as well, so.
It's half distance between each school.
I will let her know that.
Pretty close. I'm too lazy to measure it, yeah.
For the, for the expected crowd, is, is the parking realistic down there?
Yep, it is, but it, but they, they did it for fifty years, I mean.
But I think, yeah, I think the numbers maybe were, well, maybe not, I don't know.
It'll only be one game, I, I'd like to see it.
Yeah. We had a, we had a, I don't remember what it was, it was a fundraiser or something, they had a game down.
Well, they used to do a throwback game.
A throwback game, yes.
Baseball does it, baseball does it annually, usually.
This year, we're doing Polar Park, we talked about that, and like, are we throwing on the, the throwback? And it was like back and forth, back and forth, I think we're.
Well, we never played in the show on the throwback, it was usually Mater or somebody else, but now that the show has Fuller Field and Clinton can't seem to get onto it, probably not a lot of room to play Clinton baseball games on Fuller Field anymore. We'll have to talk about that for next season.
Yeah, we will definitely work on that for next season, so.
And the tickets for Polar Park, they'll be available at the door?
They are definitely available at the box office. I will also have some things at Dr. Meyer's office on Wednesday, and I will send out some information to everybody, so. But you can order, you can get them beforehand, I say wait until just beforehand if you need to. If you do need to purchase extra tickets, I do say do it before you get there, only because you don't want to get stuck in the box office lines, because those with IDs that, that get in for free, the students or staff members are all, all get in for free, will have to go to the box office to get a ticket, so it could be a little bit more time-consuming. You're better off with a digital ticket if you need one.
Okay, all right.
So, but I will, I will update everybody on that.
Great.
Cool. Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, John.
One more question while we're on athletics. So there's, there are no more fees, right? Every, every student plays sports, free charge?
For us, yes.
Okay.
For co-ops, if there's an additional fee, like an ice fee or something now, that's, that's not included, but user fees for everybody here.
Yeah, and I think we had last year basically agreed to say, if, correct me if I'm wrong, if an athlete plays a co-op, and the cost to pay to play at that school, that fee were to come through, and it was, it was basically akin to what a fee used to be here, like, we would cover it, but we can't, we can't go further to cover things like if it's ice hockey, it's ice time, it's diving, it's pool time.
Right.
But if it was a straight-up like a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollar fee, that we would make sure that the Clinton student didn't pay that fee to the co-op program as a flat fee.
I, I just wonder, the increase in numbers that we, that I believe we've seen, and, and, you know, that, that she provided was, and how much is that attributed to children being able to just sign up without there being a charge? Not that we didn't offer, you know.
Assistance or whatever, sure.
No, I think it helps, because I definitely think, particularly, I think, some sports like track, you know, I think track's a good one where there are definitely some kids where track is their sport, but there are other kids that might just do track more casually, and, and it's okay, right? Maybe you could sort of excel in one area or not, but it's just, you want to go do something. And I think not having that barrier of like, even if it wasn't a lot of money, but just, it's not that, that extra hurdle that you can say, yeah, I'll come up and do it, you know, so.
No pun intended, track with the hurdle.
Yeah. All right. So just a couple end-of-year logistics things. You have a updated events calendar in here, which we probably already need to make. The Clinton to Showa game is not at six, it's now at seven, change to it. I tried to bold some of the things that are more likely to be kind of typical school committee commitments. Some of those other things are just sort of there for your benefit, if you want to attend them or not. And then I have some school committee dates, the next sheet, just, sorry, yeah.
Before we move on, so for the, like, this week, I know tomorrow night is National Honor Society.
Yeah.
I know there's the, like, the different sports events and stuff. Is it, can we say it's customary that we'll all go and whoever attends and sit like towards the front row? Like, okay, I just wanted to be clear, because sometimes we go and we're not really sure. And then the other thing, too, that is coming up is the Memorial Day Parade. I wasn't sure.
Oh, yeah.
If we, if we wanted to continue to march in the Memorial Day Parade as a board.
If the sun's out, I'm down. We'll be happy to march in the Memorial Day Parade.
Okay. Well, if it's raining, we usually don't have one.
We had one last year.
Okay, so Dr. Meyer, do you think you'd be able to get us some, like, cool swag, throw swag?
I got pencils, I got some pencils ready to go, and we can do that, and we got the banner, I think, ready to go. And then I think, I think Rotary is also taking more of an active role with the Memorial Day Parade this year, too, so they'll be kind of upfront, so I don't know if we can maybe be near them or not, I don't know, we'll see how it goes, but.
Terry's got them, they're going to go out in front, actually, kind of right in front of the parade.
Yeah.
Rotary has a small flags, and he's going to have the, I think they're the National Honor Society students. They're going to actually hand out flags right before the color guard, and then everybody else.
Okay.
Cool.
Are you committed to the Rotary?
I haven't really, like, I haven't been, I haven't been penciled in yet, but.
So you don't want to walk with us, that's what Tina said, she was asking, not to put you on the spot.
Listen, I was trying.
In front of the eleven viewers at home.
I was trying to, I was just trying to get them back to back, so I could kind of like walk fast, and then be a Rotary, and then hang back, and be at the school, no. All right, so we'll, I'll try to, I have the stuff for Memorial Day, yeah, so we can, we can take care of that.
Cool.
All right, school committee calendar. So the sixteenth, right now, we're going to plan on meeting here at five o'clock. The eighth-grade step-up night is at six, so this, that should hopefully be a very brief meeting. Really, it's just kind of, usually it'll be, it'll probably be just reorg and bills and minutes and that kind of stuff unless there's anything crazy that comes up. And then we could just go right from here over to the eighth-grade recognition. If something does come up major, for whatever reason, some town meeting surprise or something like that, if we need to either reschedule it or, or that night, schedule another meeting, we can. July fourteenth is what I'm proposing for the date in July. That's the same week as the superintendent's conference, so I know that I'll be around, because it's later in the week. And then the two meetings in August, I was looking at August eleventh and twenty-fifth, that's kind of typically what we've been doing, where we do that, the twenty-fifth's like the day we come back, and we kind of give you sort of an update and get our last-minute things before we go, so. Unless there's any major questions or changes to that, and then I'll try to get, we'll work on the full-year calendar and get that out in the, in the summer, okay?
Okay.
FY twenty-six budget update. The House budget did come out, you have those cherry sheets in there. There have been some changes, but not necessarily the Chapter Seventy, our Chapter Seventy stayed exactly the same. So the governor proposed fully funding Student Opportunity Act, the House kept it that way. So that's, that's good. We'll see, you know, we'll see how this continues to play out. There's a couple other things, I know that the federal government came out with their, or at least the president came out with the, the White House came out with the, their skinny budget, I think they called it, something like that, on Friday. And it indicated that sort of consolidating some of the title grants seemingly into sort of like one sort of grant, and then consolidating the special ed grants into one sort of IDEA grant. It seemed, when I was reading the breakdown of it, it seemed more positive than it could have been, but not, not necessarily positive, but more, not as bad as it could have been, because they're indicating that Title One funding won't go down, but it is probably, I mean, I'd already wrapped my head around the fact that Title Two and Title Four were probably going to get eliminated, which seems like they are. Title Three seems to be the question mark, that one I thought would survive, and I think right now that is on the, that was penciled in. We'll see where the federal government goes from there, but at least Title One and IDEA, which are our biggest, are the ones that seem to be kind of left alone right now, so, you know, it's a much, losing Title One versus losing Title Three is, it's, you know, total different order of magnitude. So we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out. So overall, it wasn't worst-case scenario. The, one other thing that I know that we're looking into is, we do have some, we are working on closing out FY twenty-five, and I know Annette's been working hard with Amanda, looking at our encumbrances and kind of recoding things to make sure things that should have been or, or are eligible for grants are, are charged to those. And we're looking at our FY twenty-six budget to try to come up with the most current things. We have seen an increase in our out-of-district placements for next year. We have particularly two large tuitions that are move-ins, so that there are students who, at some point during the last year, their parent, the family moved to town, and now we are getting students in our district placement, and now we have, we have financial responsibility for that. That might require us using more circuit breaker for next year. We have that money to do that, so I'm meeting tomorrow, I have a meeting to review all the out-of-district placements to try to get up on that. We've been reaching out to confirm all of our vocational acceptances. So next meeting, we should have a budget version C, which will have some staffing changes that are based on our most current, just staffing changes that we have, and then the tuition updates and any implications that might have on circuit breaker. So we'll get that, that there, but I think. But I think, you know, obviously, it's not, you don't want to have to use circuit breaker, but that's why it's there. If those tuitions all come through, it is one of those things where we might qualify for extraordinary relief next year, which means we would get additional circuit breaker funds to offset those, which would help kind of backfill that. So we're, we're working on that. We're trying to kind of identify all of those, but a couple last minute surprises that we got to account for, so. But that's, that's why it's there. Middle school building project update. I don't think I put anything in the packet. We have our regular, we have our, you know, we have a meeting every Tuesday, so I have my meeting tomorrow. One of the big things we have going on this week is they will be bringing furniture samples to the middle school on, they'll be set up for Friday for the half day, and there'll be different samples of furniture that teachers can provide their feedback on. So there's different, you know, a lot, there's a lot of different options these days for chairs and desks and all that kind of stuff. So it's just sort of getting feedback on, and it's more, it's not necessarily like, if this is the most popular chair, that's the one we're ordering. It's just, it's more for kind of like the style and that kind of, that feedback so that we know what we're looking for, and then we'd go from there, so. Yeah.
On the middle school project?
Yeah.
Has there been any feedback about the, we had to dispose of the excess spoils? I had mentioned looking at the...
I'll probably get, I'll probably get updated on that tomorrow. I'm not sure where it landed, but I do know there was a separate meeting with the chairman of the permanent building committee, Chris McGowan, to talk about the spoils and looking at that as an option. And I know we walked the site a couple weeks ago to really look at things that we wanted to preserve in the building and that kind of stuff. And that was one of the things we checked out, was just making sure that they saw that area, and we said, this is what we're talking about and that kind of stuff, so.
Could save a significant amount of money.
Yeah, I know they're looking at it, so I don't know exactly where it landed. I know that there was a separate meeting with, with Chris to go over that. Like I said, I'm sure I'll probably get briefed on it tomorrow, and I'm sure it'll be on the next full committee meeting, which I think is in another week. All right. The, believe me, I've been in plenty of meetings on, dirt, soil is dirt.
Let's call it a dirt.
Yeah.
I'll still keep my backyard open if they want it.
We used to make fun of the, we used to make fun of the civil engineers when I was at WPI because all their classes were names like Dirt. You know, that kind of stuff. And now it's like, now I understand it. There's a lot of money in dirt. The, uh, school... School, school choice vote amendment. Just asking you to, I'm recommending that we vote to amend the school choice participation vote that we took last meeting to include three slots for kindergarten. We did a survey like we did last year, and there were three families who currently have students in the district who would have younger siblings that would be entering K. So it would be allowing that family to keep in there, and we can, we can give them preferential treatment if there's more applications due to sibling preference. That is the, one of the things you are allowed to do. So the, I guess I would recommend that we amend the motion to include the 3K slots in to be anticipated to be filled via sibling preference.
So, I'll second.
Questions? Conversation? All in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think the last order of business I have under mine is just the high school is looking to have early dismissals at 11:39 on the 11th, 12th, 13th, and 16th for their final exams. And then we have our typical last day of school, Tuesday, the 17th dismissal times is 10:30, 11:00, and 12:00. So since those are just sort of, at least the high school ones definitely are not on the published calendar, we normally have you take a vote to approve those.
Mr. Sirmak, 11:39, not 11:40, but 11:39.
You understand how a high school operates. You just put the passing time and where it ends, it ends.
You still have to stay till 2:30, though, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm deciding, now, okay? I'll be checking out.
How entertaining a motion to approve the final exam schedule on the last day of school.
So. Second.
Conversation, concerns, questions? All in favor?
Very good.
All right. Thank you. I don't think we've had any subcommittee meetings since the last one. We do have a safety committee meeting coming up the 14th. We are going to do a little bit of safety exercise during the half day on the 9th.
Okay.
I think the scholarship committee is on the 14th, too.
Well, I think there's a, yeah, so I think there's a, there's a scholarship meeting. Well, our regular scholarship meeting is this Wednesday, and then, yeah, the selection meeting